Seventeenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Iredal County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like you to please, before you bow your heads in silent prayer, particularly lift up our nation, our state, our county, and all of its communities, and all of those emergency first responders in all of our departments, from ECOM to EMS to volunteer fire and rescue and full-time fire, and our emergency management folks, just lift them up in your prayers. If you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, and to the world, which is under God, infinite with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I would inquire of our county manager, Ms. Moll, if we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Chairman Mallory, we do have a few adjustments. The first is the removal of economic development from closed session, and then we have the addition of attorney-client under closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, point three eighteen, point eleven, eight, three. Then the, you were given a redlined version of the contract for administrative matters, eight point four, that I'll cover in the consent agenda. And then finally, just a reminder to the board, after I present the budget message under county manager's report, we'll need to do a call for a public hearing for the budget on June the seventh, two thousand twenty-two at seven P. M.
Thank you, Ms. Moll. Are there any further adjustments to the agenda by commissioners? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted? So moved. Motion by Commissioner Hough. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who like sign, motion carries unanimously. This evening, under item five, we have a presentation of special recognitions and awards. We have a request from the Emergency Medical Services to approve and proclaim the week of May fifteenth through twenty-first, twenty twenty-two as Emergency Medical Services Week. And Andy here, if you'll come up and share with the public the importance of recognizing our EMS services.
Well, as Beth knows, I'll be short. I'm always short. So they gave me a speech to read because they didn't want me just talking. So thank you for having me. I'm Andrew Carterell, Deputy Director of Iredal EMS. I'm here representing EMS to celebrate EMS Week. As we reflect on the past year, especially in the wake of the pandemic, and twenty-twenty-two theme for this year is rising to the challenge, which seems incredibly fitting. So there are many unknowns, many challenges, but our crews stepped up and pushed through regardless. They've done a great job. They've really, they were in double, triple shifts. They've been, they've been killing themselves, and we've not missed a single call. They've been great. The past year, nine-on-ones ran almost three thousand, thirty thousand calls. SSD has done about twenty-seven hundred transfers. Was working on board. I mean, we expanded our proactive services to expand the community paramedics and our peer support, which are both here today. The community paramedics have done about twelve hundred visits this year, and all the fire departments have benefited from it. We've benefited. Peer supports made almost two hundred contacts to families and individuals for their services over three hundred sixty-five referrals. So with great prayer and honor, I'm requesting that this week, May fifteenth through the twenty-first, we recognize that as EMS Week in Iredal County.
Thank you, Andrew. Any comments by any commissioners?
I would say that we appreciate what all you emergency service personnel does and the job you did for the citizens throughout the pandemic and every day before then and since then. But we appreciate everything everyone does, and our job is to help the manager make your jobs better with equipment pay. So the citizens are getting a lot of qualified people, and we appreciate all you've done.
We appreciate you guys, too.
Yeah, absolutely. It's like you don't know what your day is going to shape up like. You have no idea. So you've got to be prepared for anything and everything. And just, your team is amazing. The personalities, the endurance, the energy level, all the way from the training to the hands-on to the administrative part, just looking from what you've done and looking forward to what you will do. Very proud of EMS.
Your support's been great, Beth, commissioners. We really appreciate it. So it's been fantastic.
You know, the one thing is, is what you do is, is not something that you can actually teach somebody. You're born with it. God gave it to you. So the people that do what you do, we thank you because we know it comes from the heart. So we appreciate you.
You mentioned teach, so it made me think of something. So we were looking at the other day, our guys spend more time in con ed, never mind the working shifts, but just education. They have a twenty-year career, they could be a doctor. The hours they put in class. So I mean, our guys are dedicated, and the guys that are still here, they're here because they love Iredal. So it's been great.
Amen.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And before we read the proposed proclamation, just note that, you know, it's great to see so many folks from ECOM here because this is all a team effort. And the nine-one-one calls that you were referring to originate with our communicators, and then it's a hand-in-glove process of collecting information from people on the other end of the line who are distraught and stressed and trying to get you relevant information so that you can be prepared with the right treatment regimen when you arrive on the scene. Of course, when you arrive on the scene, there's always something different or unexpected. But the entire team, from communicators to EMS to first responders, you know, that also respond to medical calls and back you up, our rescue squads, our fire departments, as well as the emergency management folks who sort of look at the whole piece. So lots of different pieces to the puzzle and lots of different players doing their part. And if everyone doesn't do their part, the system doesn't work. So, you know, as I mentioned earlier, five o'clock, we've had a number of different proclamations because it seems like in April and May, that's when everybody in these services have weeks that are recognizing what they do as part of a team. So together, everyone accomplishes more, and so everybody's here. That's great. So I will go ahead and read this proposed proclamation to designate the week of May fifteenth through twenty-first, twenty twenty-two as Emergency Medical Services Week. And whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Service teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas Emergency Medical Services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value of the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services provided by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. At this time, is there a motion to adopt the week of May fifteenth through twenty-first, twenty twenty-two as Emergency Medical Services Week?
I'd like to make that motion. I'd like to request for EMS for approval to proclaim the week of May fifteenth through twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two as Emergency Medical Services Week.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Therefore, the Iredal County Board of Commissioners, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May fifteenth through twenty-first, twenty twenty-two as the Forty-seventh Annual Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme EMS Rising to the Challenge. I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. This is the seventeenth day of May, twenty twenty-two. Andrew, if you can come on up, we'll present this proclamation to you, and if fellow commissioners can gather around. Okay, picking up with the agenda, item six, there are no appointments before the board this evening. There are, item seven, no public hearings scheduled. Brings us to item eight, which is administrative matters that are appropriate for our consent agenda. We hear these presentations from staff typically at the five o'clock hour, which is held, the meeting pre-agenda, which is held in this very room. And these are items that are typically technical in nature, and by having them heard at five o'clock, it also gets staff home for dinner without having to wait until the seven o'clock hour to do presentations. So at this point, Ms. Moll, if you could please summarize all the matters that we have reviewed at the five o'clock pre-agenda meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item is requests from Iredal State's schools for approval to carry over remaining capital funds from the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year to the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. A request from Iredal State's schools for approval to purchase the Brawley Farm property as an addition to the new high school site. The agreed-upon purchase price was seventy-five hundred dollars per acre with the remainder value being considered as a charitable contribution. A request from Iredal State's schools for approval of a fifty-one-month lease purchase to upgrade the district-wide security system in all of their school facilities. A request from ECOM for approval of a contract for Viper Radio Communications Consulting and Engineering Services with MCP. The motion, the agreement was to accept the revisions from our attorney, and then once we get approval back from MCP, to authorize the manager to sign this contract. Request from Finance Department for consideration of offer to purchase and contract for surplus in real property located on Harmony Highway. After discussion, it was decided to reject this offer and to rebid the property. A request from the Finance Department for approval to amend the American Rescue Plan grant ordinance in the amount of four million, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. A request from the Iredal County Economic Development Corporation to grant an extension in order to fully execute three economic development incentive agreements for Project Drum, Artist, and Buck. And finally, a request from Tax Administration for approval of April, two thousand twenty-two refunds and releases.
Thank you, Ms. Moll. Is there any further discussion from commissioners? Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hough. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Nine is our announcement of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. We have several vacancies to announce, two announcements for the Centralina Workforce Development Board, two announcements for the Child Fatality Prevention Team, one announcement for the I Care Board of Directors, and five announcements for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Additionally, six announcements for the Iredal County Planning Board, one ETJ announcement for the Town of Troutman Board of Adjustment, and two ETJ announcements for the Town of Troutman Planning Board. All of these boards and commissions provide important work in support of county operations and policy. Would encourage people to participate and go to the county website, and you'll find, if you're not sure exactly where to look, just put in the search, you know, criteria for whichever board you're interested in. And there is a relatively brief application to complete and return to the county. And we encourage you, if you're willing to serve on different boards, even some that are not named specifically here, we periodically do have some vacancies that come up throughout the year, but the bulk of them, we do twice a year in June and then in December. So if there's multiple boards that you might be interested in, just indicate all the boards that you'd be interested in, and we, sometimes there's more people applying than we have positions for, and that's good. But we will retain your application on file for six months, and the next iteration that comes forward, you'll already have an application in. And so encourage you to do that. Item, anything further on those? Oh, okay. Item ten is appointments to boards and commissions, and we have two ETJ appointments to the Mooresville Planning Board of Adjustment, a primary and an alternate, and one ETJ appointment to the Mooresville Planning Board. Several applicants for each. This also goes through the Mooresville Town Council for their review and recommendations before it comes to us. So at this point in time, is there a motion?
Yes, I'll, I'll make that motion for the Town of Mooresville Planning Board, the ETJ appointment, Mark Brady. And then looking at the Mooresville Board of Adjustments, there was, looking at the applications, let's look at application with Dick Poor as primary and Lisa Dwyer as alternate. Based off the information in front of us, I believe that would be an appropriate motion.
Motion by Commissioner Neder. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And we thank people for submitting your names, and as you say, we will retain them on file for any further future opportunities. Item eleven is unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business anyone is aware of? No. Item twelve, this is a public comment period, our second meeting of the month. Reviewed the signup list. This is a three-minute per speaker opportunity to speak on any subject. No one has signed up this evening, but there are a number of folks here. I would ask if anyone here is inclined to desire to speak. Seeing and hearing none, there's no reason to open the public comment period or to close it since no one has appeared. Any new business to come before the commission? None. At this point, we have the county manager's report, and this is the once-annual, highly-anticipated budget message from our county manager, Beth Moll, which is the culmination of literally months of work with kickoff with commissioners. Really, it starts about time in November reviewing strategic goals and objectives with each department. And once those goals and objectives are approved, then the budget flows from how the departments are proposing to accomplish those strategic goals and objectives. And then those budgets are presented to staff through finance, and ultimately to the management team. And I can tell you from the past experience, every department manager has felt like they've been thoroughly wire-brushed by the time they have come through that process because our management team under county manager Moll's direction is very detailed and focused on efficiency and effectiveness of our services and maintaining the lowest expenditures possible to keep our tax rate low while at the same time providing the services that a growing county requires. And Irish County has, you know, grown by, I don't know, about ten thousand souls and...
You'll see it in here.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna steal any more thunder. Okay.
You just read my first paragraph.
At any rate, we always have a very good product put before us that is the result of many, many hours of effort. So without further ado, I will turn things over to county manager Moll.
I've said many a times, there's one time a year that I do take a liberty and take some extra time, and it's this time of year. Fair warning, staff, dinner's gonna be a little later because it's nine pages, so I'm sorry. But with that being said, I do think it's important to tell a story in the county manager's budget message, and it tells a story of where we have been, where we are, and where we're headed. So with that being said, I'm going to read this into the record. "To the Iredal County Board of County Commissioners and Citizens, on February seventeenth and eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, the Board of County Commissioners held a fall-winter retreat where staff received direction regarding priorities for the upcoming year. Those priorities, along with the county's adopted strategic plan and departmental goals, became the framework for what is recommended in the two thousand twenty-three fiscal year budget. The county's budgeting process begins in late December, early January, and each year that includes the analysis of several factors, including departmental needs, economic trends, and anticipated growth. Departmental budget requests received in late February and revenue projections were conservative but promising with a projected increase of four point nine-two percent in ad valorem revenue and ten percent in sales tax revenue. Thankfully, the anticipated sharp decline in sales tax as a result of COVID-nineteen pandemic was not experienced due to the continued stimulants and unemployment funds. While the inflation rate in the price of goods and services surged to forty-year highs in two thousand twenty-one, we still experience unprecedented growth. The concern going forward is how aggressive the Federal Reserve will be as they begin to increase interest rates to address inflation. While Iredal County and the state of North Carolina are not predicting near-term recession, national decisions, the continuing crisis in Ukraine, the increasing price of oil, as well as the supply chain issues on a national level, all have an impact on us locally. With sales tax being our second-largest revenue source, we will continue to work closely and track state, local, and national trends, but we are optimistic we will, we will achieve our projected ten percent increase in sales tax revenues over the previous fiscal year. Ad valorem tax revenues have also been adjusted upward to indicate a four point four-seven percent increase. We have increased our projected collection rate to ninety-nine point four-one percent, which by the way is astounding. Due to the unsuccessful, due to the successful collections in fiscal year twenty-two amid, even amid COVID-nineteen pandemic, it is important to note that the county performs a reappraisal every four years. The next reappraisal values will be effective on January first of two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three." This is key. These values reflect the qualified sales and values over the last four years and will be effective for the next four years. The real estate market has been explosive, and to put this into perspective, from March twenty twenty to March twenty twenty-two, the North Carolina home prices have increased an astounding forty-five percent. As a result of the unprecedented growth, we are seeing roughly a thirty percent increase in property values for the twenty twenty-three reappraisal. As we plan our capital projects eight years out, it's important to look at the financial forecast of the county over the same time period. As a result, we will see high reappraisal values in the twenty twenty-three reappraisal. However, financial indicators predict economic slowing in fiscal year twenty twenty-four. We could experience a recession similar to the recession of two thousand eight, and for that reason, we are managing our fund balance and remaining fiscally responsible during the promising economic times to withstand the possible market adjustments on the horizon. to withstand the possible market adjustments on the horizon. Playing this out, we should all remember what happened with the 2008 recession that spanned over a reappraisal year and the impact that had on available financial resources. In order to estimate anticipated revenues... Let me get my PowerPoints going. There we go. "In order to anticipate revenues as accurately as possible for the next fiscal year, we analyze building trends, population growth, state and federal policy decisions, unemployment rates, and personal income, just to name a few. New construction starts are a key indicator to an economic future and show builder confidence in the market. When tracking our building permit activity year over year, we continue to see an increase as exhibited in the figure below. Permitted housing units are continuing to trend up, and the real estate market continues to boom for the first third of 2022 as exhibited in the total permits chart. Total permits from January through April in 2022 have increased 29.4% over the same time period in 2021. This is a promising pattern and indicates our local economy is strong. However, the inflation is continuing to occur, shortages in supplies as a result of COVID-19 are continuing to happen, and the war in Ukraine. We're all cautious in managing the influx of growth. According to the North Carolina Office of State Budget and Management, the Iredell County continues to grow at a relatively high rate. State projections for Iredell County in 2022 population indicate 194,835 residents, and we are projected to exceed 200,000 residents in 2024. Our current 2022 estimated population of again 194,835 makes us the 14th largest county, and we rank 10th in our growth rate out of all 100 counties in the state of North Carolina. As mentioned in previous budget messages, a low tax rate is a double-edged sword in many respects. It assists in business recruitment and retention and is appealing to new residents, but it limits the county's ability to offer the same level of services as other similar-sized counties. It is a delicate balance of adequate service delivery and fiscal conservancy. One key way to sustain a lower tax rate is through strong, conservative fiscal management and diversification of our tax base through economic development. We continue to work hard in supporting our existing businesses and industries by fostering retention and expansion, as well as encouraging new businesses and industry recruitment. New and expanding companies from '21 to '22 included over $1 billion in new investment and 748 jobs in Iredell County. With the partnership of the Iredell County Economic Development Corporation, we continue to foster an environment that creates a premier community to live, work, and raise a family. Our unemployment rate has recovered from the 15.4% peak from April 2020 and is currently at 3.2% as of March of '22, which is below both the state, which is at 3.5%, and the national level at 3.6%. And this indicates Iredell County is faring slightly better than our state and our nation. The two largest sources of the county's revenue come from ad valorem tax, which is 60.07%, and local option sales tax, which is 18.03%, which is depicted in this figure. When looking at all of the economic indicators, ad valorem tax revenues are expected to increase 4.43%. Taking into consideration the ebbs and flows of all the additional revenue sources, the 2023 fiscal year budget recommendation is expected to have an overall growth of 9.57% or $22,595,855, which includes fees for services, grants, sales tax, and restricted intergovernmental revenues. When looking at our fund balance, it has fluctuated over this past several years as we've continued to save funds to pay for large capital projects. The board established a minimum threshold of 18% of operating expenses, and we have worked tirelessly to not only maintain that threshold, but slowly build back our fund balance through the diligent savings of our departments and fiscal conservative policies established by the Board of Commissioners. Our fund balance is estimated to be at 31.81% of the recommended budget, and we have maintained our commitment to live within our means and prepare for financial uncertainty. The anticipated but not experienced decline in sales tax as a result of COVID-19, coupled with the explosive growth our county has experienced, has afforded us the ability to add unexpectedly to our fund balance. As a result, we have accumulated funds to apply towards large capital projects faster than expected, which affords us the opportunity to allocate dollars toward Jennings Park Phase 1, 2, and 3. Upon direction from the board provided at the fall/winter retreat, we have moved this project forward through the appropriation of $6,575,985 from fund balance. We've made every effort to satisfy the priorities of the Board of Commissioners while working within the confines of our available revenues. The majority of the requests are needs, but most must be prioritized, delayed, or in some cases eliminated due to limits in revenues. We continue our practice of modification of each department's line item request to reflect actual spending over a four-year historical perspective. We also rolled forward unspent funds in the fiscal '22 budget to help cover some fiscal '23 expenses. This was made possible through the higher-than-expected sales tax revenues and growth experienced over the last two years. This will be the last year we will roll unspent funds to help make up the next fiscal, or to help make the next fiscal year request possible. The above graph shows the breakdown of expenditures by category. These percentages are very similar to years past, with the top three areas being education at 42.81%, public safety at 21.49%, and human services at 13.36%. When looking at education, with the new funding formally in place over two years, we have been successful in providing an educational systems the flexibility to utilize current expense funding on capital needs if necessary. The current expense and capital funding for all three educational entities is exhibited below with a growth of 9.54% over last year. Current expense is calculated on a per pupil basis. This year's per pupil expenditure is calculated by increasing it based on the estimated property tax revenue growth percentage for the upcoming fiscal year. According to this funding formula, the county will fund the schools $2,056 per student, which is up 4.52% from the previous $1,967 per student from last year. Iredell Statesville Schools will see an increase in current expense funding to $49,475,584, which is an 11% total increase from prior year. Mooresville Greatest School District is projected to see an increase in current expense funding to $13,520,256, which is a 4% increase over prior year. Based on the funding formula, Mitchell Community College will receive $4,499,438 in current expense funding, which is a 7% increase. Capital funding is equal to Chapter 105 of the North Carolina General Statutes, Article 40 and 42, Local Government Sales and Use Taxes, distributed based on the average daily membership between Iredell Statesville and Mooresville Greatest School Systems. Capital funding is recommended to increase to $8,881,377, or an 11% increase for Iredell Statesville Schools; $2,429,292, or a 5% increase for Mooresville Greatest; and $1,915,520, or a 6% increase for Mitchell Community College. Debt service continues to be covered by the county's ad valorem tax collections to pay principal and interest amounts equal to the county's borrowings for the educational facilities. This amount is adjusted annually in accordance with the retirement of principal and interests related to the debt service of capital projects and is recommended to be $30,580,176 for the '23 fiscal year. Total financial allocations towards education in the three educational systems comprises 42.81% of the total proposed general fund, but more specifically, 49.71% of the general fund unrestricted revenue. Regarding personnel, as a service organization, our greatest strength is our employees. It is only through them that we are successful, and we can serve the citizens of Iredell County. And I'm sorry, but we have so many here, and you guys are so precious to us. We cannot do this without you. The board recognizes this and has taken positive steps and proactive steps over the past several years to ensure... Wow. That Iredell County is an employer of choice. We have and will continue to focus on turnover reduction, which is currently trending at 6.53% from January through March of 2022, which also includes retirements. This is a key factor in any successful and thriving organization because employee retention is more efficient than employee replacement. Staff retention is achieved through creating positive and safe work environments, engaging your staff, sorry, and letting them know their voice is heard, showing appreciation and support, encouraging positive morale, rewarding exemplary service, and offering competitive pay. In May of '22, this month, the Board of Commissioners approved the implementation of a market study for all staff as a result of the competition in the market for good, qualified employees and the increasing salaries being offered. I am thankful the board implemented this market study, yet we cannot stop there. In order to remain an employer of choice, we must continue to adjust and stay on pace with other counties and municipalities in what they are doing relative to wages. For this reason, I am recommending a 3% pay scale adjustment for July 1 of 2022, coupled with a 0% to 2% merit increase. This merit increase can be distributed several different ways, and there is flexibility for the board to choose if they would like to provide more frequent bonuses or the usual and customary merit administered upon the employees annual performance review. We received 35 full-time new position requests this year, of which I am recommending 24. The detail of the recommended positions is as followed. Three positions in the tax administrators, or the tax assessor's office to include a real property appraiser, a personal property appraiser, and an administrative assistant. Six positions in the sheriff's office then include four sergeant positions, one detective, and one crime scene investigator. Two positions in the registered deeds office for the passports program, one building inspector in our development services division, one construction project specialist in the solid waste department, and 11 positions in the emergency communications department to include six telecommunicator 1 positions, four telecommunicator 2 positions, and one operations manager. Our staff have become victims of national and state distrust in government and have been villainized for performing their jobs. They do not deserve the criticism and unjust attacks they have endured by being a public servant. The greatest gift a person can give is their time, their talents, and their expertise, not to benefit themselves, but to benefit their community. And our county staff, they continue to do that each and every day, and they should be rewarded for that. Sorry, that's where my heart is, guys, I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry.
As the county grows and the demand for services shift, we must ensure that maintaining our facilities and expanding where necessary is taken care of as well. Within this budget, there is $14,678,000 to fund identified projects in the capital improvement plan. Included in this budget are funds to continue the necessary historical restoration of the government center along with a new entryway and continuation of incremental funding for ADA accessibility improvements at several county facilities and grounds. We also have included a complete computer network upgrade, which will allow us to segment our network to decrease vulnerabilities. We have funded a courthouse chiller replacement, as well as budgeted for necessary maintenance of various facilities to include carpet replacement and paint. We are continuing our incremental funding for additional outfit of future space for our Department of Social Services for the second phase of the expansion at Government Center South facility in Mooresville. The bulk of the capital improvement funds are being allocated towards cultural and recreational projects, the largest of which is the Jennings Park project. We have allocated $3.1 million for Phase 1 construction, an additional $6 million towards Phase 2, and $1.5 million towards Phase 3. In addition to Jennings Park funding, we have allocated funds for the Carolina Thread Trail Fourth Creek Expansion, which is a joint project with the city of Statesville, the Three Corners Green Wake Project, which is a joint regional partnership, and then Stumpy Creek Ball Field Lighting. Finally, we have budgeted the third year for the set-aside funds for the ICATS Matching Funds Facility grant regarding fire and rescue funding. This recommended budget also includes the continuation of a nine-cent-all-county fire tax, which is served as a sustainable funding mechanism for the 19 contracted volunteer fire departments. Fire protection is a vital service Iredell County provides to citizens through the assistance of the volunteer fire departments. We have also budgeted the continuation of the previously modified rescue funding, which is funded from the general fund. In July of 2022, the existing fire and rescue contracts will expire, and we are working with all of these departments on new contracts. We are also working to implement the results of a third-party consultant review as it relates to fire tactical channel dispatch and e-comm operations. This was a multifaceted review with various recommendations, but the largest of those is the transition to one Viper-Somocast radio system for the entire county. This project, made possible through the American Rescue Plan Assistance, or ARPA, funding, will transition Iredell County from five radio systems to one inoperable system for all the public safety first responders. We are partnering with all the current Viper users, as well as the city of Statesville and Town and Mooresville, through the design of the system and hope they will transition with us to achieve countywide interoperability. We also have two voted-in fire tax districts, Troutman and Mountmore, in volunteer fire departments, which have requested an additional penny on the tax rate in their voted-in fire districts, which that is also included in this budget. So to wrap it up, this recommendation and this message fulfills my obligation under North Carolina General Statute 159-11. It presents the recommended fiscal year 2022/23 general fund budget of $258,751,275. This maintains the current county tax rate at .53.75 cents per 100 valuation based on tax base of $28,807,137,000, with a collection rate of 99.41%. The fund balance on June 30 of 2022 is estimated to be $28,315,305, which is 31.81% of the recommended budget. Respectfully submitted, Beth Moll, Iredell County Manager.
Good job. Thank you.
Good job, Beth.
Like he said, great job. And I'll make that motion when you're ready. Okay. Just want to say appreciate all of the investment of your time and your heart, your soul into crunching all these numbers, understanding that behind numbers are people. And at the end of the day, you know, we're all about neighbors helping neighbors. And we have been blessed in this county to have been able to shape economic growth in such a way that it has produced sufficient funds to be able to up our game, to make a transition from a small county that traditionally had, you know, mostly the knife out to cut funding for departments because it just wasn't there otherwise, to a county that now is a powerhouse economically. But with that positive result goes higher expectations. And that's why you see in the budget an emphasis on accelerating some projects that we were doing pay-as-you-go, taking 10 years to complete, where we're able to provide that, those recreational opportunities for people more or less in the here and now and not delayed almost a decade. But that's because of the type of growth we've had, you know? You can look around the Charlotte area, and you can see all the counties are growing. But a lot of counties are growing just with residential development. And you have to have residential development, and it's coming here whether we like it or not. But we need it. But our secret sauce is that we've been able to attract quality employers who recognize the strength of this county, being the citizens of this county and the workforce that's available to them. And so that increase in our tax base that you've seen before revaluation is the most, I think, that the county's ever had that I can recall. And, but with that increase goes an expectation of an increase in services. And so the main driver for that is our people. And so we want to ensure that, as Beth said, that Iredell County is the employer of choice and that we are a community, the premier community in which to live, to raise, work... and that we are a community, the premier community in which to live, to raise, work, raise a family, and that's what it's all about. So, any other comments?
I just want to say...
Go ahead, Marvin.
I just wanted to thank Beth, Susan, Deb, and the entire staff for all the work they did to get this budget together.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Norman.
I just want to echo what James said and thank you and staff for the hard work that goes into that. And I tell people, being on the NCAA board directors, we have growing pains, and it calls for investments in people, equipment. So our taxpayers in this county, the manager mentioned by 2024, we'll break 200,000 people in this county. And I want to thank all of you for being here and thank you guys for what you do. And it's our job to help the manager make your guys' retention easier, pay the bills for your families and give you some reward. And we need to do a better job of giving you some political cover from things you can't control because it's a national situation. I'm retired law enforcement, and back in the day, emergency services personnel, teachers, all those people were revered and looked up to, and our society has allowed things to attack people that don't do these jobs for the pay. They do it because, as Commissioner Brown mentioned earlier, they do it because it's in their blood and it's their dedication. But I want to say thank you, and we're proud of you. Did you have comments before? Okay, go ahead, before I make my motion.
Yes. It's amazing to me that you can put the amount of work even in just, I say, nine pages. And you said that was like... This is more than just a report. It's the heartbeat of Iredell County. And I knew a lot about Iredell County because I've lived here my entire life, seen the changes, know the people. But there's a lot more that goes on than you could possibly explain to the citizens just in passing. I have gained additional respect and appreciation for our county staff, our county manager from the time I've sat in this seat from elected official position. Nothing but respect, appreciation, admiration, and we are fortunate to have you as our county manager. Our team is outstanding. Our employees are amazing. I would shout to the rooftops that there is nowhere better than Iredell County. This report states it right here, where we have been and where we are going. I'm proud to have this seat and be able to have such a budget presented. Thank you for the hours, the dedication, the stress, the making decisions of what is going to happen, how can it happen, and how can we make this our home even better, even stronger? And with your foresight, and not to mention the math skills, quite impressive.
Thank you, County Manager Moll. Scotty, I'm going to turn it down to you.
Well, you know, I don't know that I can say anymore than what's already been said, but...
I know you can.
We're just so fortunate to, like you said, to live in Iredell County. I travel all over the world, and a lot of people know I travel a lot because I get a lot of ridicule about it. But I go places and see things, and you know, we're number 10, right at number 10 in state North Carolina for a reason, you know, because we do a good job. And you know what? We commissioners don't do the job. It's you. Y'all guys do a great job under the leadership of our county manager. And you know, when I get, when somebody comes up and starts ridiculing our county manager, there's a reason I get mad because I work with her and I know what she does, and her heart is in it. And let me tell you, if you go to work every day and your heart's not in it, you need to find a new job because that's what it's all about. When you go to work and you enjoy what you do, it's not work. And you know, she puts up with a lot of stuff. Y'all have no idea. People get on to her and, you know, it's just, there's no sense in it because if you look at the numbers and go back to the math, we're the greatest county there is. You know, the counties that are better than us, you might want to take a look at them because you want to live in Raleigh, you want to live downtown Charlotte. No, you don't want to do that.
But they're not better than us.
They're what?
They're not better than us.
No, they're not. That's what I'm saying. They're really not better than us. Their numbers are better because they charge a lot more taxes. But we're the best there is in this state, and I've lived a lot of different states, and I always come back to North Carolina for a reason. It's the best there is. So I applaud you for what you did and for how many hours you put in, you know? I would call her sometime in the afternoon. I'd say, "What are you doing?" I'd say, "I got a question." I'd say, "Are you home?" And then, "Won't bother if she's with her kids." She says, "I'm still at the office." And I said, "Why are you at the office?" She says, "This has got to be done." And see, that's what I do, but I own my own business. You don't own this, but you do. You take ownership, and that's what I'm proud of. So thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Marvin, anything further to add?
Oh, no, we're just happy to have them. How about that?
Okay. Is there a motion to call for a public hearing?
Mr. Norman, I'd make a motion that we call for a public hearing at 7:00 on June 7th for the fiscal year 2022-23 budget message, or budget.
Motion by Commissioner Howell. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aha.
Motion passes unanimously. Is there anything more to come before the commission? All hearts free. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion we adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned.